All right, so I am going to call this meeting to order at 6:33. Since I see no one from the community here, Denny, are you the person who will tell me whether there's anyone on the Zoom link?
There's no one on the Zoom link.
Okay, then I don't need to read this because we don't have any community comments. So we will move on to Esther, oh my gosh, I can't pronounce your last name, Masuli, and Annie Loffler, who are our student council reps and who will be giving us a presentation.
My name is Annie Loffler. I'm in 11th grade on student council. So do you want to start on what we've done so far this year?
Yes, I'm Esther Masuli. I'm a freshman. So this year we've done the Custodian Day, which basically we give photo cards, postcards, and flowers, chocolates to the custodians to our school and appreciate their help and everything. And then after that, during Halloween, we did a dress up contest, which is the students come and dress up as whoever they like, as long as it's appropriate. And there's multiple categories such as best group, funniest, most effort, and then that ended, I think, first of November.
And so now we're going on to like our biggest event, I would say, of the year next week, which is Spirit Week. So we pick a theme for each day. Some of them, so it's a big competition between the grades. So like, for example, one day is color, like Color Day, so each grade has a color. So every day we'll go around and we tally who's dressed up, and if you're dressed up, then you get a point for your team. And there's a lot of different ways to earn points. We just had a trivia night we're gonna have. I think the student office is hosting that, which will get you points as well if you go to that. And then we do a mural contest, which are these big murals that kind of represent your grade. You can do like a show that like you make a saying, whatever you feel represents your grade. And then we get voted on that first, second, third, and fourth, which also gets you points. And then at the end of the week, on Friday, we have a big pep rally where the chorus play, or sings, the band plays. We have all the sports teams captains speak about their season. Any big school announcements, Mr. Smith will do. And then we announce like most spirited, we give them sashes, we do, then we'll do first, second, third, and fourth between the grades. And then there's a trophy, you get to put your, we get engraved with the grade. So it's just a big fun event everyone loves. So that's what we're working on for next week.
Planning ahead, we're also doing town meetings in December, planning on doing that as the students speak out how to make the school a better environment and a better place, improve it, say their opinions and everything they like about it.
Yeah, and we get to like meet with Mr. Smith too after. So kids will say what they want, we make a presentation, and then we also, we pick like what we think is the most important or like most said during those meetings, and we'll share them with Mr. Smith. And he will try his best to change that and make those changes for us. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, that sounds terrific. And I'll be really interested to hear what the results of the town meetings are. Anyone else?
I was gonna say the same thing. Will you be able to come back and let us know?
Oh, yes, definitely. We've had, I know last year and the year before, like our main thing were the parking passes from that, which is still in the works. But yeah, we definitely will come back and share the biggest thoughts.
That would be great. Thank you guys so much.
Yes, thank you both.
I appreciate your being here. Thank you.
We should, most likely have lots of things to do this evening to get ready for tomorrow. So thank you for coming and we'll see you next month.
Yeah, all right. Beth, Superintendent, I'm sorry, Superintendent McCoy?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to share some updates relative to the district as well as my goals. So some congratulations to our amazing students. Our science Olympiad team, for the first time, won first place in our league, which is super exciting and it's still early in the season. So congratulations to all of our scientists. The casting crew of Sherlock Holmes had three very successful shows, which did include an English accent, which was amazing, and an added challenge, of course, that our other students undertook. The golf team, state champions, and congratulations to someone named Charlie Potter, who happens to rank number one in the state. Woo! The field hockey team, it's actually been updated since we printed it in the packet, has now made it to the Elite Eight and will be playing on Friday. Boys soccer is playing Thursday in the Sweet Sixteen, and girls soccer is playing Wednesday in the Sweet Sixteen. So our fall season continues even as we get ramped up and ready for our winter season. So lots of positives happening there. As you know, I have three goals for the year, so I just wanted to give you a quick update as to where we are. The first is developing a K to 12 vision for teaching and learning. So I must credit Denny with a lot of this work and his work with the instructional leaders and principals. But as you know, we've developed nine best practices that we are hoping are incorporated into all of our classrooms more frequently, K to 12. They have been part of the educators' goals and the goals that they've adopted for the year. They've picked one or two that they really want to work on, as well as the leaders, the leaders have all chosen to find ways to make these best practices come alive and to duplicate and expand throughout their buildings. So when Denny and myself and the principals go on our classroom observations and walkthroughs, we're looking for these best practices and giving feedback to the educators around them. We're calibrating feedback at our leadership team meetings. So we had one meeting maybe two weeks ago where everybody brought some observations. We talked about best practices in terms of what observation should include, learned some strategies from each other and how to be efficient but meaningful. And we'll do that again in January and then later this spring. Monthly faculty meetings is one of the ideas that the principals came up with as part of their, how do we bring these to life? So each month they're highlighting one of the different best practices, and roughly there's nine faculty meetings throughout the year. And so they're doing pre-readings with strategies for the educators to read. Faculty are bringing strategies to share, and then they're doing small group discussions on kind of how to bring that back to their classroom, which is super exciting. And Denny has been hard at work preparing for our full day of professional development after Thanksgiving. I don't mean to speak for him. Is there anything you'd like to say, or I can keep speaking for you? No? Okay. Well, I will say that he just sent out the menu, so we're gonna have a keynote speaker in the morning, which is A.J. Giuliani, who is absolutely fabulous. He worked with the Academic Innovation Committee when we developed the portion of graduate. He was supposed to come here in 2019 but was snowed out, couldn't get out of Pennsylvania, which is the day that was like the one day that we had school and nobody else did on that map, if you remember that map. Yes. So we had professional development that day. He is coming this year, and so he's gonna do the keynote about engaging students and empowering students to own their learning in a world where they're super distracted with social media and everything happening. So how can we capture their attention and get them excited and curious about learning moving forward? Then there's multiple workshops the educators will pick from, all emphasizing those nine best practices. And in the afternoon, there's various activities for educators to work together in multiple teams. But I'm sure Denny will give you a huge, long overview of that as we get closer and afterwards. So that's goal number one update. Goal number two is around defining measures of success for our district. So again, thanks to Denny, we are working with a company called Open Architects to develop a dashboard, and it's gonna be customized to the measures that we think are important as a district. So we already have one that has been super effective in analyzing MCAS. I mean, it does things in a second that normally would take us two hours to calculate on our own. So the data dashboard in terms of academic benchmarks will be updated to include DIBELS and some of the benchmarks we do at the elementary level. Obviously, MCAS will be in there, attendance and discipline, we'll be able to kind of track kids' progress there, as well as it's gonna pull in all of the data, the qualitative data and quantitative, from the multiple surveys we give throughout the year. So we'll be able to highlight things like belonging and look at growth and hold ourselves accountable to that, especially across some groups. We'll wanna pull in around sleep and being balanced, around engagement. And so again, thanks to Denny, this is a work underway, and I'm super excited to see it progress as things go on. And then goal number three is around transparent communication as a district. So you saw my newsletter come out last week. I've scheduled four office hours, two in the morning and two in the evening. I have another one tomorrow morning, if anybody wants to stop at nine, it's on Zoom, the link's on the calendar. I have attended, to date, two of the four PTO meetings. I'm going to the high school Thursday night and having an opportunity to share where we are as a district and where we're headed with the PTO groups. I've attended the Sherburne Council on Aging luncheon. I'm scheduled to go to Dover after the holidays. Super exciting, that was a great conversation about the strengths that the community identified through the entry process, our goals, and then to take questions. And there were so many great questions around how do you balance screen time and then a break from screen time, what's the future of education given artificial intelligence? And I said, we're all wondering that. And then a question about the long-lost art of cursive. Yes, so we had a great conversation.
There's a state that mandated it again.
Oh, really?
Yes, I can't remember what state it is, but yes.
Well, our Sherburne historian was there, who made a really good point, that it's gonna be hard for students to read primary source documents if they can't read cursive.
Yep.
Yes, so something to keep in mind. I've relayed that information to Denny. Tomorrow's Wednesday. So Wednesday and Thursday is the joint MAS, MAS-C conference down on the Cape. I know that we're all very busy, especially since tomorrow night we have Challenge Success and Thursday night I have the PTO. So I'm not able to go for the two days, but I'm flying down, not flying, driving quickly down on Thursday and driving back Thursday afternoon, just so I can attend two workshops on communication. They're by someone I used to work with in Boston, who I think very highly of. He's a communication specialist now and is running his own company. But one workshop is on how to navigate polarizing issues, and the other one is how to keep your strategic plan at the forefront. So I will be there for half the day and then come back, and then we'll be bringing him to the district to meet with the leadership team in terms of how to work on our branding and our messaging and capturing captive audiences and people's attention moving forward. And lastly, I have applied to be part of the LEAD Now program, which our superintendents from across the country who come together with some communication specialists, and we work in cohorts to share best practices, talk about problems of practice, and work on a project. So I'm hoping that I will be accepted. I will let you know in January if that's the case. And last but certainly not least, Denny and I had the opportunity to attend the MECO Leadership Conference a couple Fridays ago at Gillette Stadium, and they are launching MECO 2.0. So it's an opportunity for communities to re-engage and recommit to the standards and expectations we have for all of our students, including our Boston students. So the mission of MECO 2.0 is that every student in a MECO district, and that's every student, experiences an inclusive, equitable, and anti-racist education. So it goes right along with our mission, our strategic plan, our DEI work. And this is a short video that was done by Millie, the director, that hopefully, let's see if it works.
Racism has been very bold in recent years. People are losing their lives, walls are being built, children are being separated from their parents, but the MECO program can be bolder and stand out for racial justice. After George Floyd was killed, we developed an anti-racism roadmap. We're embarking on a journey toward a mission we call MECO 2.0, where every student in a MECO district receives an inclusive, equitable, and anti-racist education. Every student. MECO 2.0 means changing, improving, enhancing the work that we do each day in our schools. Let's ask ourselves, how can we do better by breaking down racial barriers and stereotypes, by diversifying our teachers, by creating inclusive and representative curriculum, by building interracial friendships, by implementing restorative justice practices, and by preparing students for a diverse workforce? We cannot end racism, but we can make the experiences of all students better by implementing small and large changes. Our founder, Ruth Bassel, said, business as usual as a way of life must be totally discredited. We have to continue to evolve as individuals, as a community, as a school system, and as a world. MECO is not a racism program. This is just our mode of transportation. MECO mobilizes people, people's hearts and people's minds. Being a MECO community carries a lot of responsibility. We are the largest voluntary school integration program in the United States. People see us as a model for school integration. You are participating in something special and unique. As long as the community begins to see it that way, then every decision that you make will benefit everyone in the community. MECO was grassroots then and it's grassroots now. What is your role in this next chapter of MECO 2.0? Remain inspired to do this work. Be intentional about your approaches and insist that change can happen.
So we thought that was super powerful and obviously reinforces everything that we've been working on the last few years. So we're hoping to, this is on our website, and integrate it into our work moving forward, especially as we revisit our roots and who we are as a district, and making sure that we all recommit to our work with MECO and making our Boston students our own. So happy to take questions.
Thank you, that was, that is lovely. Questions? I have one, but I'll wait. Okay, I'll ask my question then. On the data dashboard, I know at one point we had talked about, and this sort of got lost in the shuffle during the pandemic, some, doing some, and maybe we don't need it anymore, but doing some data-driven analysis of school start, the school start time change. Can that, that data dashboard be used for that? Is it?
So I think it's separate. The data dashboard is gonna be kind of ongoing information that we have about students to hold themselves accountable that everyone's succeeding with their academics, their social emotional. That said, Denny and Kate are collecting data around attendance, disciplines, sleep, social emotional well-being, quantitatively through our already existing limited data dashboard, very limited. And then we'll be doing some surveys this spring, and then we'll be presenting to you in June kind of where we're at and what's working and where we might need to tweak some things.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else? Other questions? All right. So we shall move on now to financial reports. Dawn?
So you have your standard warrant report, and I can now say they've all been signed, probably is our new signer for this fiscal year. Again, if you ever have any questions, just let us know. And everything is always at Central Office, should you'd like to look more deeper into any of these AP warrants. Your monthly report, now this is your second report for fiscal year '24. So following prior years, I put in bold any new information, but I've left intact what we've already discussed, because it still is telling the story of the fiscal year. So there's a couple bold things to, to point out, and most of them positive. So on the revenue side, we did a little bit of a projection of our interest rates. As you know, they remain favorable right now in that arena. And although we increased our budget a little bit last year, you never want to overestimate your interest revenue just in case, or your interest income just in case it doesn't pan out. But we put it at 40. Right now, we're, you know, expecting it to be probably closer to like 111, I mean 110, it could be even more. I was a little conservative, because we don't know what the rest of the year is gonna be. But just like we had last year, I think we ended up with $110,000 over what we budgeted. I think that's gonna be another favorable line item for us. And again, keep in mind that that could play into our EMD that we put towards our budget for fiscal year '25, because it's revenue that had we known would have offset the towns' assessments. So that'll be a positive thing as we're looking to balance our budget '25. On the operating side, since we last met, working with, with Denny and looking at our student, current student cohort, we have increased our English learner educator position to a .8. It was a .5. And I will go ahead and give you a little preview, we're anticipating, put it in as a budget for fiscal year '25 at a 1.0. So that, that need is continuing, just with the diversity of students that have been entering the districts.
Is that person shared over the four schools?
No, that's, right now, that person is only at the high school. Yeah, we have a, we have a English learner position who's shared across the two elementaries. And there's just a little bit of a need right now at the middle school. And so right now, the elementary person actually is covering a little bit of the middle school. It's a very fluid room, right? So you sort of have to be nimble, nimble. We've always had the 1.0 in the district that has, I will have to say, every year since she's been here, her position could be sort of prorated a little differently. And so we usually do get coverage, but now we're getting beyond what we can do with our 1.0.
If you know anybody who wants to be a .2 at the middle school, please let us know.
And on the expenditures, obviously now, in September, I didn't have some encumbrances of some of our larger items, but now you'll see that we have encumbered transportation and health insurance. Healthcare costs are within our, are projected to be within our budgeted amounts. I did want to let you know that West Suburban Health Group did approve the retiree plan increases for fiscal, they do, I have to say, calendar year, so starting in January 1st. And we had, we did see a larger than normal increase to the various plans that we have. It was primarily driven by the cost of the prescription drug piece of that, which we, is a piece that you actually buy, and it's a part of each subscriber. So you don't, that's one piece that's fixed. And so West Suburban Health Group always sort of leaves that piece intact, and where we can play around a little bit is the, the medical side. With that being said, but most of our subscribers are on MedX, and they saw an increase of 4.7%. However, I wanted to make sure that you knew that for like the last three, three or four years, they saw 0%. So if you look at it over a five-year increase, it wasn't a, you know, chart, it doesn't, it wasn't that bad. And some of the, and the beauty of West Suburban is that there's, there's choices. And Blue Cross MedX didn't use to, wasn't usually the lowest, but now it is. So that is for the benefit of some of the plans that saw a higher increase, where we had fewer subscribers. I think we said one that was almost 13%. They have options to move. So that's one of the pluses of, of being a member of West Suburban. And then, so looking at where we're landing, we think our OPEP contribution right now will be about 250,000, which is sort of the place where we thought we would be on an annual basis. And utilities, we're still looking at, so you don't have an encumbrance for that, but we'll make sure you have that in place before you preview your fiscal year '25 budget. Any questions on, everything else is actually, didn't really change.
All right. It's not that there's, like, I'm not paying attention, it's just, it's a very thoughtful memo.
The roof handler thing, that's still ongoing, though. Have we had any more pushouts from that, or do you know?
From the?
For the roof, for the equipment.
Oh, yes, yes. No, no, we did not have the updated information on that.
Yeah, I was just wondering. Because everything keeps getting, I mean, it's, I mean, everything, yeah, everything.
Yeah, so we're working on getting the final, there's, like I said, there was, there was a lot of investigative additional studies we had to do to get the bid ready. And so we're, we're trying to get that pushed off the door so that we have a better handle on what the cost is gonna be. I know I told them we took our foot off the gas a little bit, because we pushed it off, but let's keep at it so that.
Yeah, because it just seems like you keep having to, to keep asking for, I mean, you know, just in everything with the supply chain, we keep having to ask and re-ask.
Exactly.
Because if not, they forget, and they're like, oh, you wanted that still? Yes, we did! We're still here!
Nope, nope, I hear you on that, so.
Is that heat or just AC? Is he in AC rates?
No, that's the air exchange.
Right.
And it's not, it's a little bit of heat to offset the, the air conditioning, because the way our air conditioning work, it needs to be the air mix.
Right.
And so that's the piece that's being electric.
Okay, okay.
Electric, electrify, yes. It's electrified. So that's, right, that's the little bit of gas that we use that's gonna be electrification now.
Which is great.
I just have a question. The, everything with the bleacher project is still, I know it says December, we'll hope, we hope to have our.
Yeah, so we have been getting some updated quotes, running to a few little issues on that. So my architectural firm is working on that right now, and I don't have an update. Most likely, I will come forward that it's, it's more costly than the $500,000 we've been carrying. But I don't wanna roll that number out until I have a final number. So they're working on the bid of the bleachers themselves, which had a little hiccup, which they're promising me that they're gonna figure out. So that's why I know by December we should have the final cost, and then we'll go do our final ask from a few other groups that have shown interest, and then figure out what additional money we may need to pull from the resources of the region and get that finalized and approved.
Okay, and we're hoping that the schedule, though, will stay the same, even if the money is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, the schedule's just, which should stay the same. So they had actually already sent the true official sort of plans to the bleacher manufacturer company to sort of price it out, and that's where there was a little hiccup. So we're, we're totally in line with having this ready, installed in the summer and ready for the fall sports.
Great, awesome. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the fiscal year '25 budget guidance.
So this is just an opportunity before we sort of roll out version 1.0, if there were any items that you wanted to make sure we paid special attention to, any concerns that you may have, it's your opportunity to have some voice in version 1.0, so that it can be incorporated while we're sort of, while we're sort of in that really building stage of the budget. I think if you remember last year, for those of you who are on the months leading up to December, which is when you'll see your version, first version, we sort of walked through some of the mechanics of some of the pieces, the assessment calculation, we talked a little bit about healthcare. But I don't, I don't think there's any burning issues. I will say healthcare, you know, based on what we saw with the retiree rates, you'll probably see us roll out a pretty high increase, just to make sure at least our version 1.0 is covering. If you recall, last year, I think we used 8%, it came in at 10. I don't wanna find ourselves in that situation, so you may see us coming out with a higher number with hopes that something settles less than that. You know, that's a big, that's a, it's probably one of the larger, outside of salaries, it's probably one of our larger operating costs. We will get it as a single line item. But all of our contracts are sort of settled, except for educational assistance, which will, will carry a reserve in your version 1.0, but we have contracts for everyone else, which is nice. It makes my life so much easier than last year. And we'll give you a background about other funding sources that we use to sort of take care of the operations in general, the grants that we rely on. So hopefully, we'll put together a, a nice package for you. And if anyone has any notebooks at home that they'd like to donate.
I brought my 23, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. We love to have those to recycle. Part of our going green.
Thank you.
I think I took all my paperwork out of that.
And if you think of anything in the interim, just let Judy know, and she can let us know. I still have to work on Sherburne's and Dover's goes out before year, so we still have some time before we're digging into the region.
We did receive budget guidance from Sherburne already, right?
Just today.
Just, okay. I feel like I saw, maybe it was an accident, that somebody sent me an email.
It just, it actually just came out today.
Okay.
I didn't.
Yeah, I know. I think I returned, I think I replied to the person and said, I think you, I mean, somebody else?
I pulled you as a chair.
Oh, because you were the chair last year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But don't worry, it'll be in your budget book. And I'm, you know, Dover, it was perfect timing because Sherburne's is going out on Thursday, and I thought it was gonna go in blank, but it just came out, and hopefully we'll have Dover's before you get your December, so you'll have both of them in the packet. I'm not seeing any deviations from our typical budget guidance from the two towns.
Where are we, I think, I'm trying to remember where we are in like long-term space planning needs, that conversation, and where that falls.
Right, so we're, we're anticipating getting our first draft, so we have had that ongoing space audit taking place. They had presented one draft, but it sort of had a little bit of a hole in that when they came and did their site visit here at the middle school, they couldn't see most of the middle school. So they came back, actually, I did a walkthrough with our primary principal on that engagement last week, where he came in and looked at some of the, like, prominent, at least the space, and a couple other spaces that he couldn't see. And there, also, we had some transition here with our leadership, obviously, in the middle school. So with Ann now sort of settled in, I had their consultant who sort of looked at our schedule, spend some time with her, asking some questions, so they need to fill in some holes. But I told them that our goal was to be able to present that to school committees so that we could use some of our ESTER funding for some of that projects taking place. So I needed them to like get it moving so that we could put that into place. So I'm really hoping we'll have something for you in December. So I'm really hoping we'll have something for you in December. And I will give you sort of a preview is that they think we have spaces that we could use differently and not, and not that we're missing square footage or anything major that we've got some spaces that we can retrofit and incorporate. I think one of their main things they see that's lacking in some schools built around this time are small breakout rooms. And so I think you're going to see where they, they're going to take spaces such as this, the high school library, and suggest ways that we can put some glass walls up and such to sort of make some spaces that are more versatile. So that is sort of what, and they will give us some estimated cost with some of those too, that just gives you some guidelines. And then I would foresee that we would then go and prioritize with the building leaders and see what we could sort of pick off the list and take care of with, with some of our ESSR funding. They were very impressed with sort of our schedule and our academic offerings. The gentleman who sort of crunches all the numbers, says he does it for a lot of schools and he was just blown away by the depth of courses that we have, given our size. Yeah.
Good work.
Thank you. So yeah, I haven't had anything to, I was waiting till I have something to give you. But hopefully, our plan was to have it in sort of like this timing, but we're a little, like I said, a little delayed, but they're working hard on it and hopefully we'll have something for you in December.
All right. All set?
Yeah, I mean, I think you asked the question earlier about like budget guidance. I think I'm, I am personally curious about the trends that we see and that we need for English language learner, because to your point, you know, we are, it's an unpredictable thing. A whole family can move in in March and it's on us to, you know, provide. And so while, you know, our philosophy has always been to run a very lean ship, that's one area where having, you know, maybe a little bit of extra or having a couple people who maybe are dual certified or whatever creative ways we do it. I'm curious about the trends, like who are families that we know, like are there things that we know are going to come down the pike? You know, are there housing developments that we know are in development, that we know are geared towards families who might be moving into town and might have different language needs? So I'd be curious to know if we have any data that allows us to look a little bit, the same way that the onsite insight lets us look down the road.
Yeah.
In some predictable way so that we're there.
Predict, you know, the type of families that will move here. I do think that one that's beneficial that I've learned from just talking through this with, with Denny is that, you know, there's levels and so your hope is that they graduate. And so you're, you could be taking, servicing a different group and if you do your job really well, hopefully they're rolling off and then your new ones come in. We also at the point where I think we're hitting the threshold where there might be an additional grant that we're going to be eligible for.
Oh, that's great.
That would give us some financial support for the additions that we've been adding.
Yeah, and I mean, to, to that point, I agree. And I think that as folks move, because of geopolitical, you know, war, because of refugee situations, that you're also looking at, you know, people who've had literacy and their own home language interrupted. And so yes, our hope is that kids go on a predictable path and can graduate out of those levels, but, and, and, not but, like, you know, being prepared as a community for whatever unexpected things, you know what I mean? Not depending on, like, we know usually a kid will go out in three years and then not need services and just, I don't know, just kind of, I am curious to make sure that we have what we need to respond.
Yeah, and we've, we've increased at this position greatly in the last couple of years. I mean, we had a tutor who would tutor anywhere from like, you know, five to 10 hours a week and it was, it was actually an outside contractor that you really never heard that much about because it wasn't an FTE in your budget. And then it's grown and so we had a .4, then it was a .5, now it's a .8, then it'll be a 1.0. That's, that's doubling what our services have been.
And do we know, like here, are our teachers all FEI endorsed?
Not all of them. We're, we're working through it, but Denny's been very careful with the principals to make sure that the students are placed with, with teachers who are SEI endorsed and more are becoming endorsed. And Denny's offered lots of different options for teachers to either relearn their SEI tools that they learned years ago or learn new ones.
I mean, one other thing I'll add is that the person that is currently the high school L teacher, I think is probably the most qualified person we could possibly have in the position.
That's amazing.
I mean, she previously was the director of multilingual education for all Boston public schools.
Wow.
So we have really.
Really high quality.
He wasn't kidding.
Yeah. It's, and she's, the most impressive thing I think too is that she's working with our general, like content area teachers to help them build their school, their skills and their toolboxes, because a lot of the students now, some of our Ls are going into history class, going into biology class. And I've been really impressed by the willingness of our high school staff to work with her and to carve out planning time. So right now we're not just servicing the students, but we're building in time for her to co-plan with those teachers, which is huge.
That's huge. So yes, to your point about budget guidance, that, what Denny just described is exactly what I would hope to see in the plan and I'm extremely grateful, whatever ELLS fairy helped us to find such a wonderful qualified person, because I think that is always the hardest thing, right? So thank you, thank you for that.
So if you'll be looking at a .5 add, because we have .5 in your 24 budget, we've already had to creep up this year, we're then looking to go to 1.0, so you'll see a .5 as an addition between 24 and 25. And know that we always have funds in some of our contracted services for services that we don't really know about that we might need that could serve if we have to supplement that a little bit here and there.
And I think yes. And so like for me, what's so important to hear is, is that like moving away from the model of having the contracted person who comes in and tutors and more towards a person who's part of our community who'll work with our teachers because they think particularly is, you know, students do move in in the secondary level, we want them to be able to participate in the high level history, you know, all those academic vocabulary things that are hard for someone who's also like learning everyday English.
Yep.
Last thing I'll say about this too is that as somebody who's now past their first year but still relatively new to the district, you know, I felt like as we were going through and our numbers were expanding, that the district is really living up to its commitment to the equity piece of diversity, equity and inclusion. Because, you know, every time I had conversations with Dawn, we were leading with what are we going to do to help the students, not with here are the budget constraints here. And so I, that to me has impressed me a lot over the past year and a half, that we have given the students everything they need to be successful and have let their needs dictate how we hire and the things that we provide for them.
And as Denny said, the teachers are so open to working with Akita, they love her, they want to work with her, which I think is super telling and the parents are so grateful for the services and the support their kids are getting.
Yes, great. Thank you. So thank you, thank you too.
Yeah, and we're fortunate that we live in, in a district, right, that where we can be so nimble like that, we aren't, but we, we're very respectful of the budget, but we have leadway to make sure that we're taking care of whatever arises for students during the school year and not saying, oh, we have to wait till next year.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, and thank you, Dawn, I credit you with that nimbleness greatly.
My pleasure.
All right, so now we will move on to the calendar task force, which I serve on, but which Beth is going to take the lead on explaining.
Where we are?
Yeah.
All right, so as you know, the three committees asked that we create a task force to look at our calendar to be more equitable and inclusive of our community and especially as it becomes more diverse. So we have a group of 20 school committee members, parents, educators, administrators, and six wonderful high school students who have been working on this since June. We've had five meetings, our last one was last Wednesday. We've had incredibly engaging conversations, thoughtful, we've, you know, modeled being vulnerable and learning from each other and being accepting of mistakes as we learn more about different religions and how they're celebrated and different cultures' needs. We had the survey come out, as I mentioned before, we had an extraordinary number of responses, we dove through that, then we found out more things that we needed to go and research, we looked at other districts, we've looked at our attendance data. And as we sat down last week to kind of say, well, what else do we need to know from the community? Because we asked so many broad questions in the first survey, we knew we were going to need a second survey with more targeted, like, do you want this kind of schedule? What do you think about these holidays? And as we were sitting there saying, how do we frame the questions around, you know, going towards a calendar that has only the mandated holidays by the government and getting rid of any non-mandated holidays? Or do we add these holidays and how do we decide which ones? We found ourselves having, you know, a hard time with that, given all of the emotion with everything happening in the Middle East right now, to be discussing the holidays that Muslims celebrate, that our Jewish families celebrate, that our Christians celebrate, that now might not be the time to be talking about which holidays belong in a calendar and which ones, you know, are recognized on paper but not with a day off. And so what the committee asked last Wednesday is that the three chairs go back to their committees and consider allowing us to put this on pause for a short time. You know, we don't know the future of what's happening in the Middle East, we don't know how long this is going to last. But coming up to the holidays and everything, we'd like to just at least wait until January, revisit this, maybe have some clear heads and some clear hearts about what we ask in a survey and how before we move forward.
Yeah, and I, I want to add, personally, this last month has been really difficult for me and it's been wildly difficult for my family, for my children. And there've been, there have been a lot of things, there, there, it's a very complex issue. And there's a lot floating around about, you know, facts, history, a lot of those things. And, you know, I, I said to both my kids, I'm, who are out there on Instagram, and I am lucky because I live in this community where I feel like diversity is, you know, rewarded and people are basically, for the most part, really kind and supportive and understanding. And I think it's a very difficult time for anyone who has a connection to the Middle East to be talking about sacrificing one holiday, one side's holiday versus another. And it shouldn't be, actually the word sides was wrong, but, you know, and, and I think this is a really wise move. We'll see, I, I'm praying that we're in a better space in January. We'll see where we are and revisit in January, but I think that that would be a really good thing to do, you know, being one of those people who is really affected by this.
I, I hear you and I support your decision to put things on pause. I caution us not to kick this issue down the road as painful as decisions of any sort might be, because not deciding anything benefits the status quo and benefits those whose holidays are currently recognized. And so saying we can't address this now because there's a war raging is a very understandable thing and it might still be happening in January. And doing nothing benefits those who are already benefiting.
Yeah.
And it ignores those who've come to see us, who have made it clear that they have a need from us or a need to feel considered and important.
Yeah, and, and I, I think that, I completely agree with that and there would be a tendency to kick it down the road. And I think that the last, the last month has been horrible, okay? But I also think that a couple of more months, we may at least be better able to talk. And I think a lot of people who are affected by this right now have a real hard time even talking. So, yeah, but I agree with you, we can't, we should not put it off forever or that long.
And I know the committee feels that way too. I mean, we've spent so much time together and separately doing research and analyzing data, we don't, I don't want to have to start with a whole new committee a year from now and redo this whole thing. So we've done our best to keep memos and notes and questions. I also think it's an opportunity for the committee to just take a break because we've been like, you know, up to our noses in the data and the research. And then when we did take a step back and say, okay, we think these are the questions we're going to ask on the next survey, one of our community members was brilliant in saying, take a step back, if you weren't in this room for the last 20 hours and you saw this out of the blue, these questions, how would you react? And that's when we're like, ooh.
That's fair.
Yeah, so we just need to kind of take a step back, go back to the balcony and then revisit it.
Yeah, maybe it's worth in your next update, saying something about that to the larger community so that when the second survey appears, it doesn't feel out of the blue that people know that, you know, there was a pause taken and now we're revisiting it so that that doesn't come off as like, now, oh, now we're going to put judgy situations on everybody's religion, which would feel yucky.
Right. That makes sense.
Tech, you know, officially, you usually vote, because you have a joint meeting in January on what the school calendar would be.
Yeah.
You know, we, we know when the vacations are going to be because we know, you know, when the holidays roll out in December, we know Presidents' Day. I think we probably have a little bit of wiggle room into February to decide, you know, adding or subtracting some of the other holidays.
We do, it's usually the, the pressure from the public to get the calendar out.
I think yes, because I do think that if we're going to delay into February, what the pressure is, is for families who go to camp and schedule vacations. They care whether or not they can schedule a vacation at the end of June or whether they have to push it into July.
Right.
So for, you know, like, you know, our family, my husband's work actually shuts down the week that July 4th is in, but if I found out that we were going to have school the 28th or the 29th, I would not book the trip. If that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. So we want to be respectful of people's needs and there's, you know, it's not just as easy as, well, let's just add these three holidays or let's add these two holidays or let's add these five holidays. You know, there's also been a lot of feedback around childcare and people needing childcare on the days that we have off from school. You know, people knowing that camp is going to start, you know, the second to last week in June, you know, why that holiday and not my holiday? So it's, it's pretty complex.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, not, not, I'm not wading into it, I agree, it's like super complicated and I think as long as we are proactive and transparent, because I think what happens is like around January 3rd, somebody puts on, you know, a parent board in town, when's that calendar coming out? It'd be great if people in town knew, well, the calendar's not going to come out until February and the reason is because of this, this and this, that's all.
I'm happy to put that in my next release letter.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, thank you for being so thoughtful.
No, it's same. Yeah, it's, it's, I so deeply appreciate the work of the entire committee to get down into the many layers that you have described that are involved in making a decision on behalf of a whole community.
I have one other question, which I don't want to throw another monkey wrench into everybody's plan, but when we're doing this too, because we also have to remember all the other districts, because if we're like doing any kind of athletics or anything, because if we're not in school, we can't ask our kids to come and play, but if there's a, I mean.
We have all the tri-county and comparable, yeah.
Yeah, because my whole brain is trying to wrap all the way around this and it's, it's, it's about to explode.
It's the other districts, because our staff members live in other districts and we looked at that when we looked at this like, I don't know, 10 years ago and that was a, that's a big factor.
That's, you know, like everything I'm thinking about, then I'm going, and then the other things and, you know, it's just, and then the other things, it's a lot.
Right, and there's the continuity of learning, that when you start to, you know, have lots of holidays, it starts to look like Swiss cheese. You know, there's the equity piece. I mean, those are the three things we've kind of kept at the center of it was, you know, academics first and social emotional wellbeing, you know, recognizing holidays and whether that's through educating our community about holidays, whether it's about putting them on a calendar, whether it's about having a day off, we need to educate period and recognize. And then the equity piece, which is, so, but yes, that's definitely, the difficult thing is it'd be nice if everybody was doing the same thing, but we have some taking them all away and we have some that are adding. So it's like.
I know, and that's the whole thing in my head, I'm trying, I'm trying to put it all together, I'm like, so if we just do our little pod, but oh, if we get in a playoff situation, then we can ruin this pod. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out all the pods.
Yeah.
And my head just exploded and, and I want to go curl up.
It's a really.
It's hard, that's really hard.
And, and what I have also found interesting is the competing, that, that there are concerns that I didn't anticipate, okay, that I was surprised about. And, and it's, you know, it, it just is a really, it's not a straightforward, we're going to add a holiday or two. It's a really complex issue.
Very complicated.
Yeah, it's really complex.
I, I think it's remarkable how many responses. Have we ever had a survey that had that many responses? That in my time here, I don't remember one, maybe it's school start time. So I think that speaks to how strongly people feel about this, which is why there's so many competing needs, but I applaud you guys for trying to. to balance it all.
And I think also ultimately sharing with your committee, whatever decision you've come to, the reality that no decision will make everybody happy.
We had that discussion last Wednesday, and I said, welcome to my world.
And and that they have to get okay with that, like recommending a decision, being aware that is going to make some folks feel like it didn't go their way. And that's and just acknowledging, like, that's hard. We all, you know, everyone wants everyone to like them, right? Like, most people.
And there might be people in the committee who are disappointed.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. There probably will be.
Yeah. So, yeah. Good. Thank you so much. Thank you for the thoughtful update.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for trusting us to find a path forward.
All right. So shall we move on? Do you want to remind us about what the issue is and then we can?
A P card? Yeah. So, you know, John was here in September, and we presented the idea of a, it's a credit card, but it's called a P card because it's purchasing card that's used for municipalities. And so we sort of outlined it for you, wanted to have you have time to decipher it. And then we've bringing it forward tonight for approval. The bank, the Bank of Montreal, and they do require school committee vote to do a resolution authorizing the issuance of the P card. We've also included just a brief sort of procedure that we'll put on file with our other financial management procedures, just sort of outlining how it's going to work. I see there's a missing period here, that we're really looking right now to start it small and that everything would run through the my my office. We won't have multiple P cards. And it's mainly the take care of things online that don't take purchase orders. So it's not like we're going to be going to the store and buying stuff. It's more just facilitate PD, things that need to be ordered where it's a vendor who just doesn't use purchase orders. And that will provide us an opportunity not to have to be reimbursing individuals. Because the other issue running with that is that when you purchase something, say with your personal credit card, they don't really recognize that you're purchasing for a school. And so any of those employees who do that don't get reimbursed sales tax. And it's just much cleaner not to be reimbursing employees. So we sort of let it out of the bag at leadership last week, and I've already had a couple of people reach out and say, how can I use that card? We don't have it yet. But when we do, we will take care of it. So John already has the application ready to go. And your packet is sort of the the resolution that's provided to us from the bank. All we had to do was sort of put our name in. And Judy will sign it on your behalf if you approve it this evening. We'll send this along with our financial statements on the application. And then hopefully we'll have the card in use. Then we'll be paying for it sort of with an ACH on a monthly basis. It'll just be set up. John will get it set up. But know that any purchase that's going to be used is going to only be driven by a purchase order. So we're not circumventing any of our normal purchasing. So if a school needs a professional development course paid for or an item paid for, purchase order purchase order still goes in, it's approved by the principal, it's approved by myself, and it's just a matter of how we're going to be paying for it.
Lots of checks and balances in place.
Yes. Questions? No? Okay. So we are we are voting to approve this resolution, and the resolution is there. So may I have an emotion, a motion to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of individual procurement cards with the Bank of Montreal?
So moved.
Kate Potter, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Maggie, she, we need to continue to say that, by the way, who's.
I think it just makes it easier for Amy when she's taking the minutes.
That's what I'm thinking. That's why I'm going to say.
She watches the video and then takes the minute.
Yeah. So I will continue to say, yeah, I will continue to say, thank you, Maggie Sharon, for seconding you. Is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Okay, it is unanimous.
Perfect. Thank you. Minus mark.
Minus mark.
Minus mark. That's right. All right. So that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have two consent items and then some informational items. And so does there, did anybody have any changes to, first of all, the minutes? Second of all, the high school out-of-state field trip. Do we need to talk about that?
We're happy to answer questions. It's one that we've done several times in the past.
Do we need to vote to approve it, though?
Yes. But it's a consent. So we're going to vote to approve the consent agenda. Okay? Does anyone have any? Go ahead.
I'm not listed as a member present on the 10th of October.
Oh.
But I'm definitely there doing things within the meeting. I can confirm I was present.
Okay, so.
We'll update that so you can confirm that.
There's not time.
Yes, because it has you down there that you seconded a vote.
Yeah. And yet you're not listed.
It's a Harry Potter thing.
Yeah.
She had on her visibility cloak.
I need to borrow that.
Yeah, really, seriously. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Angie Johnson.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Colleen Bird, so moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
It's not really discussion, but I do want to say I'm so glad we're taking field trips again.
Yeah.
Let the children out. This is a great one, too. It's really great. I went when I was a high school student on this trip, which was almost 40 years ago. Yes.
It looks so cool. It looks so awesome.
Yes, we went with people from Texas and California. And it was, I still remember lots of it. Yeah.
That's excellent.
We'll let Mr. Bork know that you're on backup for chaperone duty.
Oh, I love a field trip. Anybody needs a chaperone. That's my favorite. That's my favorite activity.
That was exactly what I thought. I was going to raise my hand and say, oh, I'm happy to chaperone that one. So, all right. There are several items for informational items here, one of which is a memo from the principal of the high school that I I know that a few of us wanted to make some comment on. And so I'm going to call on Kate, who I believe probably wants to make a comment.
Thank you.
And then I will make my comment.
Okay, perhaps. Thank you. So so first of all, I'm grateful for this update. We've several groups have been curious about the CPR and the perhaps extra substance abuse education. Glad to see that more people are being certified to teach CPR. And I and it doesn't really say. It it sounds like the wellness department is still working on how to what to do in the 24-25 school year. I know we had a presentation by students and first responders strongly suggesting that we make this mandatory. So I'm glad for the update, and I hope we continue to get updates. And then I want to say, too, because I've been raising this a lot and will continue to be kind of stickler, I appreciate the update. I am a huge fan of our wellness department, and I'm sure scheduling is incredibly difficult. And I love that Officer Mitchell and Officer Colo are talking to the sports and drama and music students. I think that's fantastic. And I think going down into lower grades to start this education is also fantastic. But I have to say, I think we're really missing out on somewhere, if it's not in their in their, you know, wellness class block, somewhere revisiting drug and alcohol and where it's when the kids are are older. I just think it's and there's maybe they're still thinking about it. There's not really an explanation. It just says, you know, the sophomore, junior, senior elective model is not the place to add these lessons with nothing else.
So they're thinking about potential guidance workshops that they have. And even since this memo was written, Kate McCarthy and the student supports team have been looking at other options to bring in supports and programming. So this is just a snapshot in time, and it's not the end of the conversation.
Okay, that's great.
Go ahead, Meg.
Um, I I think also, I totally appreciate, and, you know, had children over the years who were involved in the conversations that happened with regard to drama and and sports. And I think that those, like, conversations and the work that gets in there, it's a lot around, like, you're a school leader. And, you know, also, there's a lot to lose when you make these decisions. And I worry that the kids who are not already engaged
Yeah.
in those things are are kids who maybe are less engaged in school, have a lot of free time, have to like, those kids are not enveloped in this at all and oftentimes can be at very high risk for these behaviors. So that is a worry that I have. And and I know that there's a lot of debate about what is the most effective way to send this message. You know, scared straight never really worked. And, you know, dare wasn't really effective. But like, I I I think we have to keep going back to the drawing board because in our community, statistically, we've felt a lot of pain from, you know, and 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 it whatever we can do, we have to do because anything we do before another disaster strikes, you know.
And I want to add, too, that I certainly don't think it's only the school's job to to educate. I think it's hugely on the families and the community. But I do think that the school, we have the kids here. We have a wellness program. And, you know, SPANDS is back up and running, and hopefully people are thinking more about things. But I really think it has to be hit from many angles.
Yeah. And and I I would add, the words that spring to my mind, frankly, are portrait of a graduate. And I know this isn't part of portrait of a graduate, but for me, part of the portrait of a graduate is is a graduate who has the knowledge to make really better decisions. And I'm worried that we're not quite there in this area. And I think that that's a really important. And I also agree that it should, whatever we do should be evidence-based. And, you know, I realize that this is within in the purview of the administration and maybe not the school committee, though maybe it falls under policy. I don't know. But I think that we've made it pretty clear that this is an important issue to us. Is there something that we can do to help this process? Is there is there? Because I think we're we'd all like to do that, you know?
Yeah, no, I think, you know, John and certainly other members of the high school team have been directly impacted by all of the pain and been holding up everybody else during these painful times and feel that it's important as well. They're also, I think, attending many of the SPANDS meetings. Even just this morning, we had our executive team meeting, and Kate was talking about other possibilities. So this is just one aspect of how we might approach this.
Deeply appreciative for the update. And, you know, I think on the point of clear communications, it's really helpful to kind of know where that stands.
And so even this morning, and you can doubt from me, I asked Kate if she would either come to the like, school committee meeting or write a memo, and she said yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be great. Maybe she could come the next time.
Yeah.
Love to hear updates on what the programming is and the different types of avenues. I think that older students can really be guiding younger students, too. And so if we do want to go into the middle school, it might be helpful to have, you know, older peer ambassadors, you know, older high school kids that have lived through this, that want to, you know, help, you know, prevent another tragedy. I think empowering the kids at this time is important.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll just add that Kate's is her update would be more like also broad based with wellness in general, right? So there's multiple topics in that bucket that she's been working on.
Including substance.
Right.
Use and abuse. Yeah.
On on a positive note, like, hearing the excitement about trivia night, about activities that we can plan for our kids even beyond just sports and and like, you know, even one-off things that get kids in community, keep them, you know,
Yeah.
out of the basements and whatever, you know.
Yeah. I will tell you that recently, the at the community center, they had the Princeton acapella group come. Jack Green is part of that. And they got 100 kids, 100 high school kids of that, which is like leaps and bounds better than we've done at those kinds of. And I think that's wonderful. And the more that we can have events like that, and the more that we can encourage kids, you know, to be doing things like like that rather than.
And like, some of our kids were participated, too, right? Some of our acapella.
Oh, yes. Yes, they did.
Yeah, we were out of town, but that looked.
Yeah. Yeah, we were as well.
Well, and all the Coral students got to hear them here on campus.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So more to come.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. All right, good. So I think, any other comments on these, the informational items or any items for our December 5th meeting that anyone wants to talk about right now?
May I add one comment just about the newsletters that are hyperlinked here, which is this is an effort in our communication goal to spread all of the good news around academics, updates, events to all of the community. And as much as we love the six of you, there's more people that we would like to. So having the principals focus their energy into the broader newsletters and then just giving you access to that is our goal.
That makes sense.
I hope that's okay.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. And Friday's leadership team meeting, we talked about streamlining more so the four schools newsletter. So over the course of the next few months, you're going to see some shifts and changes.
Yeah. I think that's great. Because why give them work to do?
Yes.
You know?
They've already put it together.
They don't need that.
Yeah. We can just go to the source and read.
Yeah, exactly. That's much better.
And you can go to the communication hub on the website and read any of the other newsletters you want to read, too.
Right, right.
I have really enjoyed the new website. I just want to say, thank you so much.
Oh, yeah. It's great. It's so much easier.
It is you.
Yeah.
With your team.
Yeah.
Just whoever other magical people are, I'll find that we love it.
I like the little megaphone icon, too. I really.
I did pick that one, so I'll take credit for that.
It's really old school, you know? So, all right. So if that is it, then I think that we can do. Do I? I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Maggie, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh.
I didn't know if we had to vote on that.
We did. We made it official.
I'm still not.
Adjourned at 7:40.
Thank you.